I will call to order the September 15, 2014, meeting of the Town of Cary Planning and Zoning Board. And note first that our Chair, Mr. Swannstrom, could not be here tonight. And with help and accommodation from the other participants here, I'm going to attempt to fill that role. And we'll move directly to our agenda. The first item is to adopt our agenda. Are there any changes? And if not, a motion to adopt the agenda would be in order?
So moved.
Motion from Mr.?
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Shaw, and second from Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to adopt the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Next, we have the approval of our August 18, 2014, regular Planning and Zoning Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes? And if not, we'll entertain a motion on the meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Just to clarify, and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes eight to zero. We will now move into our rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment cases. We will have one case with a public hearing, followed by three that do not have a public hearing. I'm going to briefly review the rules for the public hearing. Staff will introduce the proposal at the podium that is farthest from the clerk. I'll open the public hearing, and at that time, the applicant will have 10 minutes to present their commentary and perspective. Then we will move to other speakers from the public. Anyone who wants to speak, we'll have one person at a time approach using the podium closest to the clerk. Please give a completed comment card, which you will find up near the reserved seats, to the clerk as you come down to speak. Please begin by stating your name, and you have up to five minutes. A timer on the podium will show a green light for the first four and a half minutes, then the light will turn to yellow for the last 30 seconds, and when it turns red, your five minutes have expired, and I'll ask you to wrap up at that time, so that we can be fair to everyone. Also, please adhere to the following rules: Be concise; avoid repetition; adhere to the five-minute time limit; designate a spokesperson for large groups; direct comments to the full board, and not to an individual member. And so you'll know we won't ask questions or interact with you. This is our time to listen to you, the citizens. Please return to your seats after concluding your remarks, and I'll close the public hearing when all speakers have been heard. At that time, the Board will have discussion. We may ask questions of staff and the applicant, and take action and discussion. And so with that, we will move to our first case, 14 CPA 03, the Crosspoint Church YMCA. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. For public hearing tonight, as a request from Crosspoint Church, for amendment to the comprehensive plan for a seven-acre parcel located at 6911 Carpenter Fire Station Road. The request is to amend the land use from office and institutional and parks and open space to commercial, to allow for an indoor/outdoor recreation facility and other office uses. Here's the location of the property on Carpenter Fire Station Road, just west of NC Highway 55. The existing Crosspoint Church is under the site word there, but it's just to the west of the parcel. This slide shows the properties that were notified of the request. We have received no emails or calls to date regarding this request. This slide shows the stream buffers and floodways that impact the site. Panther Creek lies on the southern boundary of the property, and a tributary is on the west side of the property. According to the Parks and Greenway Plan, a multi-use trail is proposed along Panther Creek, along the south property line. Property is served by Carpenter Fire Station Road, which is a major thoroughfare. NC 55 lies to the east of the property. An existing triangle transit route runs nearby along NC Highway 55. The town's land use designation, existing land use designation for the subject property is office and institutional and parks and open space. This slide shows how the land use plan will look if amended to commercial, as requested by the applicant. At the Town Council Public Hearing held on July 17, 2014, the applicant explained that the request is to allow for the church to build an indoor/outdoor recreation facility. While stated intent is for the YMCA to operate the facility, approval of this request will not limit the use of the property to the Y. No citizen spoke at the public hearing. Council members noted the innovative request of the proposal. Examining the four review criteria for amending the comprehensive plan, we believe criteria number two is met. The proposal offers the opportunity to achieve greater utilization of the church property and meet recreational needs of Northwest Cary. Our analysis noted that the accompanying conditional rezoning request that will be heard at a later date limits commercial uses, so it's not to compete with the Austin Regional Activities Center nearby. Although a portion of the 400-foot buffer called for in Northwest Area Plan around Panther Creek is eliminated, urban transitional buffers requirements that have been developed since the adoption of the Northwest Area Plan still protect Panther Creek, and the proposed greenway along Panther Creek called for in the plan remains intact. Further, the accompanying conditional rezoning case limits the uses to those compatible in the existing office and institutional land use. Although not relevant to the consideration of the CPA, it may be noted that this proposal and two adjacent rezoning requests being heard later tonight are proposing a joint solution to traffic impacts in the area. Therefore, on balance, staff recommends approval of this comprehensive plan amendment. Following the public hearing tonight, the planning is on the board to make a recommendation to council on this request. This concludes staff comments. Mr. Chairman, we'll turn it back over to you to hear from the applicant. And following the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Planning Board. My name is Glenda Top, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Crosspoint Church. As staff has pointed out, there is a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment. What we are considering tonight is only the comprehensive plan amendment, and at a later date, the Planning Board will get the rezoning to consider. The comprehensive plan amendment only affects a portion of the property. It's roughly 7.39 acres. We are looking to go from change the land use plan from office and institutional and parks and open space to commercial. And again, the rezoning would be R40 to general commercial conditional use. The property is located in the Northwest Cary Area Plan and is designated for the office and institutional designation. The conditions that are being proposed with rezoning limits the use to a commercial indoor/outdoor recreation, office and institutional uses that are allowed under the general commercial zoning district. And by limiting the uses to the ones that I have just mentioned, the actual range of commercial uses that would be permitted is very limited and not significantly different to what one would see under the O&amp;I land use designation. With this amendment and the accompanying rezoning, the applicant is presenting an opportunity for the subject property to be developed in a way that is compatible and complementary to the existing church and the uses in the area. As was pointed out, with the growth in West Cary, the residents have requested an opportunity for additional recreational opportunities in the area, and this proposal does provide this until such time that the town would be in a position to provide amenities in the area. And also, as was pointed out, this change allows for a much more efficient use of the church property and the parking area. Although the lead pastor for Crosspoint Church is here tonight, I do want to read a synopsis of what he said at the last public hearing for council, because I do believe it's pertinent to what we're looking at tonight, and it shows the innovative nature of what the church is trying to do. Mr. Jonathan Bao explained the logic behind the request for the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request. The church had approached the YMCA to build the recreation facility on their property, which the YMCA would lease from the church. The YMCA use would result in seven-day utilization of the property, create 200 jobs, and meet an important need in Northwest Cary. Of course, as was mentioned here, the proposal is not necessarily committing to a Y, but it is committing to a recreation facility for the area. Again, no one spoke at the public hearing opposing the comprehensive plan amendment. This concludes my presentation, and we ask for the Board's support. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak on this case? Anyone at all? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions for staff or the applicant from the Board.
Yes, the change, I believe, in land use only applies to what is shown here, and even though the property does go down to Indian Wells Road.
That is correct.
Okay. Were there anything about the land use that would prohibit an entrance roadway between Indian Wells and the subject property?
That it's not a subject that would normally be considered at the comprehensive planning stage, but may be considered at the rezoning.
Yeah, in the land use. I know, not the zone, the land use.
No.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, real quick, could you highlight just briefly on the elimination of the 400-foot open space buffer, but yet that's being replaced with something kind of comparable use? Could you get into that just a little bit, please?
Yeah, the Northwest Area Plan called for 400-foot buffer along two creeks in the Northwest Area Plan. You can see both of them on a slide here and here. We don't have a comparable zoning mechanism to enforce that 400-foot buffer, and so over time, it's kind of eroded. In addition, since the Northwest Area Plan was adopted, we have adopted new urban transitional buffer standards that do protect, that continue to protect the stream. It's just not a 400-foot wide area.
Okay. So the 400-foot buffer is an old mechanism?
It's in the plan, but it's not been enforced since the plan's been adopted.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? If not, we could entertain a motion if someone has one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Board forward case number 14 CPA 03 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval to amend the land use plan as proposed.
Motion for Mr. Warner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Shaw. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, go back to the staff report. Number one, staff recommended passage. I found it interesting. Councilmember Robinson said that this was a very innovative plan that provides services for the community, and I think that it's a good fit for that area.
Other comments? All right. If not, then we will call this to a vote. All in favor of the motion to recommend approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ms. Smith. And we will move on to our cases without a public hearing. Next is 14 REZ 08, Wacina Road. Ms. Granon.
Thank you. This is a request for rezoning of approximately 58.1 acres located on Wacina Road and Indian Wells Road. The subject parcels are shown here, highlighted in yellow. And an aerial view shows that some of the parcels are developed with detached residential homes, and a number of them are also vacant. Cary's land use plan for the area designates the property for medium-density residential. There's also a portion shown in green that's parks and open space. There's a note on the area plan that states that housing in this area should have a mix of at least two or more housing products: detached duplex patio homes, semi-detached, et cetera. But notes that in the event of single-family detached, which is proposed, no mix shall be required. The existing zoning is residential 40. The applicant has proposed a resource recreation zoning designation for areas where they are fully aware that there is a stream buffer and no development would take place in that area. And then the remaining buildable area is proposed for residential 8 conditional use. And the applicant has proposed to limit development on this R8 area to detached residential. There were a number of traffic mitigations and improvements that were identified by a traffic study that was conducted by the applicant, and those are outlined and detailed in your staff report. There's also a number of traffic mitigations that were not addressed, and there's an inclusion in the staff report of an explanation. There's another two zoning cases going on in close proximity to this, and the applicants have worked together to divvy up some of the proposed traffic mitigations. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. There were no protest petitions. There was some concern expressed by adjacent property owners as to how this development would impact their ability to develop. Since that initial Town Council public hearing, four of those property owners have come in and submitted their own rezoning case, which will come before you in a few months. This shows you where the stream buffers are impacting the subject property, shown in blue, and a flood hazard area shown in green. There's a proposed future street-side trail, shown here in blue, that goes through the And this shows you the close proximity of the property to NC 55, which is a major thoroughfare, and Wacina Road, a portion of which is a collector road. There are some concerns about future road connectivity that are outlined in your staff report, and a few of you have asked for more explanation on this. There are little gaps in the development as the properties come in and are proposed for development. The applicant would be responsible for road improvements for portions, only those portions of the road that are actually on their property. So you'll see the link to this map in the staff report, and then the explanation of why it's something that staff wanted the Boards to be aware of as these cases came forward, that unless there is a development-driven project for these road improvements, at some point in time, there's a high likelihood it would be a town project for completion of this collector road. The closest transit route in the vicinity is the Triangle Transit Route on NC 55 Highway. This shows you the other current and recent rezoning cases that are in the vicinity. You'll hear another one of these presented tonight, and as I mentioned, I've had, staff has had an application for four other parcels in the general vicinity, and that plan is being reviewed right now. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available for comment, and then staff is available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon, and we'll invite comments from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm J.W. Sherman with I D S, and I've been working with these property owners over the last 18 months to help coordinate the efforts of many to bring you a hole as much as possible in this area to represent upwards of 59 acres here. As you know, as Cary is maturing, the acres that you have is smaller, and in order for these areas to redevelop, volume is most important. As Deborah outlined in this area, you're seeing three or four different cases come through at a time. I think they are coming about because of property owners in the beginning not sure what they wanted to do, but as time has matured and changes have occurred in the area, most recently with Sedgfield Project, as you know, with Marshall Parkway there, that opening with the connection to Wacina, and seeing change and knowing that most of their neighbors may be moving forward, you're going to probably see the majority of the properties do come forward before you in whole. The main thing that I want to outline with that, though, is that we are all coming to you with basically the same zoning. We're coming to you with R8, we're coming to you with single-family, and we also are coming to you trying to meet the intent of the land use plan. With that said, with medium-density residential from 3 to 8, no one has chosen to take an attached product. We're doing single-family detached. We are looking to do lots that are just slightly larger than what you see in Sedgfield. We also, by recognizing that the land use plan has open space designation on our property, we are setting aside the RR resource to comply with that. But in addition to that area, you see there's much more on our site with the RR as compared to the open space, to ensure you that upwards of 25% of our site will be designated for that purpose. The balance then would be potentially developed for the R8 zoning. With the traffic as discussed, I want to bring that up as a point of that this process that we've gone through with the other three cases, and thankful for staff for helping facilitate that, has been great, because at any time that you come in as one project, particularly any of us alone, a lot of those traffic conditions would be alone our responsibility. But we've been able to sit down multiple times and address these issues, talk about traffic generations in peak periods of time, and share those concerns and comments, and reach an agreement amongst us all, that we've been able to present back to the town staff, and we've incorporated those conditions in our, conditions of our case. With that said also, too, I think that benefits in knowing that, you know, it doesn't matter who comes first. We know what we are obligated to do, and that these are specific to our properties, that we are not going to be in a guessing game or timing game if something doesn't mature. So we enjoy the fact that we can identify those to you, and that you know what we will be providing with our case. Also, too, in the past, I know while this may not be a Cary issue, it's been brought up, too, sometimes with school capacity. So I'd like to make a couple of comments about that. Over the last few weeks, we've talked with some of the school staff. We've also talked with Bill Fletcher, one of the Board members. And Mr. Fletcher overviewed with us some of the plans that they have, as long as the Wake County staff in the West Cary market. There are a number of schools that are proposed for construction out here, and I think there's been a number of capacity discussions. But what I'd like to give you tonight to share with the Board is a most recent letter received today from Mr. Fletcher, kind of outlining their program for West Cary and what they're proposing to do, so that you can see as it exists today and tonight, how they're moving forward. But to give you a gist, there's more detail in that than I would like to cover for this case, but what they're trying to do is take any future development until all these schools come on board between 2016 and 2018, is to specifically designate these subdivisions as they come online as a node. An example of that would be Sutherland subdivision on Green Level Road in West Cary. What they've done with that subdivision is say, okay, anyone in Sutherland that comes forward, we're going to take you and put you over in Turner Creek, where Turner Creek has capacity. And that way, you won't overload existing schools in that area that they normally would go to. They're going to look at any future developments in these areas that way. If we come forward with a subdivision, if that capacity's not there, they will put us to a school that does, such that you don't have the West Cary schools over exceeding their capacity limitations and putting them where they are within that area of Western Wake, where they could have that supported. And I realize, again, that's not your decision, but I just wanted to update you on those facts. We do believe that this request in whole does fit for the medium-density residential, the West Cary market, and doing single-family, and all of us in here together at one time helps mitigate that traffic. And with that, we do appreciate your support, and I am here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, are there any questions from Board members for staff or the applicant?
Ms. Granon, we had an email exchange relating to the schools and the assignment of the schools. I know that was just addressed, and you told me, basically, you did not have that information of where these students from this area would be assigned. I did notice online that the normal assignment for that is Austin Ridge, and I believe that was kept. So I was wondering if, do you notice, or does the applicant know how far they would have to go to get to a school that would have capacity?
If I could interject, I think what we had responded was that it could be over a year before this project is developed. It could be a year and a half before these homes are occupied if they're approved. So all of that is subject to change. So what we would be speaking to is not verified and not confirmed at this time.
But there's no assurance that the schools within a reasonable area will have capacity?
We don't have that information.
Okay. Now, as far as traffic, do we know, and this probably is a Mr. Jensen question, I'll give him time to get up here, do we know what the level of service on the roads just to the side of the Green, I'll start with Green Hope School Road and that intersection with NC 55, and how that would be affected by this? It was not in the traffic report that I noticed.
Yeah, it wasn't in the traffic report, because their boundary, based on our LDO, didn't require them to go down that far, so we didn't model it. But some of the earlier cases we've heard recently down that end of town, yeah, particularly Green Hope School Road at 55 is running at a poor level of service, DE, and continues to get worse as, you know, more traffic comes, is built out, at least on that southern portion of Green Hope School Road. I will mention, though, that we do have a pretty exciting project called Marshall Parkway Extension, which we will be taking all the way from 55 to Green Level Church Road that should help soften some of that traffic on Green Hope School Road, as well as Carpenter Fire Station Road. So that is a funded project by the town with some participation by the state, so that project is under design right now.
Is that expected to reduce the traffic, or take any of the traffic off of NC 55?
I don't know if it would necessarily take traffic off of NC 55, but it will take certainly traffic off, or at least balance the traffic loading on, between Green Hope School Road, Marshall Parkway, and Carpenter Fire Station Road. There also, just recently, was some development that the North Carolina Turnpike was planning to help participate or help fund a interchange with the Marshall Parkway project, which that in itself would help funnel traffic probably away from NC 55, gives motorists, particularly in that western section of Cary, another alternative to go north-south. So I think that is a more important project, you know, as far as helping release some congestion on Highway 55.
But some of the earlier cases we've heard recently down that end of town, yeah, particularly Green Hope School Road at 55 is running at a poor level of service, DE, and continues to get worse as, you know, more traffic comes, is built out, at least on that southern portion of Green Hope School Road. I will mention, though, that we do have a pretty exciting project called Marshall Parkway Extension, which we will be taking all the way from 55 to Green Hope, or Green Level Church Road that should, should help soften some of that traffic on Green Hope School Road, as well as Carpenter Fire Station Road. So that is a funded project by the town with some participation by the state, so that project is under design right now.
Is that expected to reduce the traffic, or take any of the traffic off of NC-55?
I don't know if it would necessarily take traffic off of NC-55, but it will take certainly traffic off, or at least balance the traffic loading on, on, between Green Hope School Road, Marshall Parkway, and Carpenter Fire Station Road. There are also, just recently, was some development that the North Carolina Turnpike was planning to help participate or help fund a interchange with the Marshall Parkway project, which that in itself would help funnel traffic probably away from NC-55, gives, gives motorists, particularly in that western section of Cary, another alternative to go north-south. So I think that is a more important project, you know, and as far as helping release some congestion on Highway 55.
Okay. Oh, one question, this really doesn't have any bearing, so maybe he can send it to me later, you can send me an email. I was just, I noticed several places in both traffic analysis reports, it referred to a Dallas protected left turn signal. Does that just simply refer to the Louvers and the signal?
It's, it's applied, but we don't apply it too often in North Carolina, but it has to do with, you know, some, some U-turn movements, as well as some flashing yellow arrow movements. But, but that's, that's something that we haven't done along 55 corridor.
All right. Just said it, doesn't really affect me on this. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions, one of the applicant and one of Mr. Jensen, and I'd like to take the applicant first, if I may. You get two legs on this site boundary situation on the southern side, and between those two legs, it looks like there are four properties that are not included. Why?
Why? The property to the west was asked to be part of the process, and they decided not to. So what we tried to do in the route, what we're together, is try to keep ourselves contiguous, not separate. So, and the property on the other end, the Summerland property that's next to that parcel we approached them to, they chose not to. So we didn't jump in the middle. So, and all the other three on the lower side, if I can point it out if you don't mind, in that area, we've approached them too, and they were not interested. But with that said, as Deborah said, now, you do have the three on that end coming in and the one on this end together on a case for public hearing next month. So I think it's just timing, and again, I think it's not that we are not excluding anybody, it's just time. And for that fact, too, just to say, as I pointed out with the road transportation network, the piece there, the dorm property, I'm representing them as a broker for that, so it is available for sale, and should it come in and redevelop, that would be a rezoning that might make that connection. So they're coming, it just takes time and consistency in what we bring forward.
And you would see them as developable properties, right?
Everything that is in that area, I don't know of any property that's completely undevelopable. They each have their own impacts, but they should have some area of developability.
Okay, thank you. You obviously know what I'm going to ask you here due to our email exchange. The question that I was really most interested in, I don't think you answered for me in the email response, and that was, when we have these gaps, these three little four-hundred to seven-hundred-foot gaps, where we see a future road construction, what have we done in the past? Is this, is this breaking new ground here, or have we seen similar situations? The council says, okay, I've got a three-and-a-half million dollar line item here that I've got to find in my budget sometime in the near future?
Most of our, I want to say continuity projects have concentrated funding on, on thoroughfare system-type roadways. We have not spent the kind of funds that you'd normally see for continuity projects on collector or local-type streets. So in this particular case, if, if the town were to consider filling in the gaps, it would have to be considered during our budget, our annual budget request time, and we'd have to, the council then would have to consider, from a priority standpoint, does this, do they want to spend this kind of dollars for continuity for this particular area of town versus other areas of town? So it's really, comes down to a balancing of what their priorities are for funding and, and how bad the continuity or connectivity may be needed.
Let me think for just a second here. The gaps are going to mostly, I would assume the gaps are going to mostly restrict people that want to get down to Morrisville Parkway. In other words, what I'm getting at is, I think that you're going to probably see more southbound traffic on this potential collector than northbound traffic, or is that getting a little too crystal ball-like?
That, that may be a little bit too, I don't think you're too far off, though. Again, I think with, with the promising news of building an interchange with Morrisville Parkway and getting to the Turnpike, I think getting to Morrisville Parkway makes probably a lot more sense. It's, it's a better attraction to, to get you to a major freeway that you can go anywhere in the Triangle, much easier than to have to navigate back up Carpenter Fire Station to 55 and then, you know, navigate through a bunch of traffic lights. So I, I don't think you're too far off on that, that probably observation.
So if this development proceeds, some people don't join in in the future, and these gaps are left in place, are the changes that are going on at the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter and Indian Wells Road, are they going to pretty much solve the issue of people trying to get out of here and southbound? It seems to me that when, when I looked at all of the projects that are going on and all of the traffic service requirements attending to those projects, we've really only got maybe one or two north or southbound turns where there's something still kind of uncommitted, but everything else seems to have been worked out to where it looks as if Carpenter Fire Station Road, both on the east and west side of 55, Indian Wells Road and Morrisville Carpenter Road, both on the east and west side, and then Morrisville Parkway further south, most of those suggested improvements are going to come online in the relatively near future.
That is very true. Again, the, the Marshall Carpenter realignment, or the Carpenter Fire Station Extension, Great Separation Project, that is a, that is a town project, and we're currently under design now, and that will, that will, that's another one of those continuity projects where we want to make the continuity going east-west much more substantial than it is today, because it's a little bit awkward right now. And as you well as you know, that, that intersection right now operates pretty poorly at Carpenter Fire Station 55. So that, that project should be substantially help things out in that area as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Warner?
Let me ask you another question about the traffic. First of all, I like the concept of providing statistics on the seventeen-plus projects to give us an overview of how all of those projects are going to impact the, the traffic, because we're looking at this project and the next case that we're going to be hearing, and we're adding three-hundred-and-thirty-plus dwellings and the trip generation from those in addition to these others, you know, by the time we get to around 2019, is it, fourteen-hundred additional trips generated per twenty-four-hour period? And my question is, my question is, because of that, do you see, do you see any relief for 55, because that seems to be the issue in terms of traffic? For example, do you see a gradual move to five-forty of commuters because of issues with traffic lights on 55? Are there other north-south avenues that could provide relief to 55?
Well, I think, I think we're finding that, that the Turnpike itself is gradually gaining more acceptance and use by, by regional traffic. I think, again, as congestion builds on Highway 55, as, you know, as soon as we built the Turnpike, congestion kind of went down a little bit, and then we started growing back up. I think over time, as you see more congestion levels on 55, make it so unattractive to use it, they, people will pay the toll and go back, go on the, go on the freeway where they can actually have express service going, going north-south.
Do you see a trend, or is it just speculation?
I think, I think we see a trend on, particularly on the Turnpike. I think that, that they're, they're exceeding their expectations on, on how many people are using that road, and I think it's continuing to get better. I think it's going to, once we can construct the interchange with Marshall Parkway and 55, that is a, a very strategically-centered interchange in whole heart of Western Cary that I think a lot of people, instead of coming all the way eastward towards 55, would probably hop on to the, to the Turnpike to bypass all of that 55 traffic. That, I think in theory, that's probably how most people will view it. Now, there are going to be those that just don't, would rather put up with a little bit of congestion and delay and not pay the toll, and will use that, you know, free facility on Highway 55. But other than that, we don't have too many north-south thoroughfares going that way. Greg?
Thank you.
Other questions?
Might as well stay on the same subject. The three gap areas, two of those three have significant stream crossings, apparently, on here, which I would suppose raises the cost of, of creating the roads quite a bit. If we, as a town, undertake that, walk me through a little bit how that occurs with regard to the actual properties themselves.
Well, general processes, as annually, as we develop the budget, if council decides to add a project such as this to, to fill in the missing gaps, that would, and they chose to fund that, then we would do a, do a traditional project of, of doing a feasibility study for doing it, preliminary planning for it, we do the environmental documentation for it, because obviously there's some stream, streams that we have to cross, and then we would then, you know, purchase the right-of-way from those properties that we're affecting. And then, once we've purchased it and got all the permits at hand, we then do the construction. So that's traditionally how it, how it would go.
And once we do that, it's done. If those properties went for development three months later, there's no reach back at all?
No, there's no reach back, no.
Is it unusual to have these gaps sitting around? I mean, do we have a few situations like this already?
I, I think, you know, in fairness, I think there's, there's gaps all over Cary as Cary has developed over the last twenty years. I mean, traditionally, a lot of our, our local streets and our collector roads never could get enough land assemblage to, to really take them very far, so we have, we have a lot of gaps out there right now. In fact, Highcroft Drive, right now, the road that we're talking about has, has gaps both on the south side and the north side, and as development has occurred, it's trying to fill in these gaps. So it's just unfortunate that, that the way the rezoning cases came in, they, they weren't able to assemble the land either by, by choice, or property owners didn't want to participate in a, in a larger-scale project. It just, it was just unfortunate that, that it just didn't happen that way. So, but it does happen around Cary quite often, and we just deal with it as we come along. Some properties may not be able to, to develop just because it's financially infeasible to do so, with so much road improvements that may need to occur, they just can't financially make the numbers work, the unit count couldn't get high enough for them to even do the improvement. So unfortunately, that's just, that's just what happens. And in those cases, similar to this, this could be a case where if it becomes financially infeasible for the property owner to make money developing the property, it'll just sit there, and then if the town feels important enough from continuity or connectivity, that we'll have to, we'll have to consider that as a possible project. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple, sort of following up on that theme. Ms. Grandin, is the, is there any legal or policy or procedural method to assist in unifying the multiple cases that Mr. Sheeran alluded to? So we have this one tonight, and we know that there are others coming, and we know the applicants are working together, and I think that's commendable. But are we sort of reliant on that private work, or is there any, any sort of thing the town can do to make it a little more holistic?
We don't have control over ownership of the properties, and if they choose to be part of a development or not, so no, we really don't have any, we don't have any ability to control that.
So if one of the other property owners were to completely change their mind, then that could sort of throw up the plan, although, again, I'll commend what Mr. Sheeran said, the efforts that are being made. All right, thank you. And then, also have a question on the resource and recreation zoning. Is that a way to, or is it a result of that, being able to sort of indicate additional open space that is above and beyond the required buffers? Is that sort of?
It locks it in, it, it provides some reassurance that, you know, there's not going to be any building in that area. It helped us have a better, more realistic idea about the numbers where the development would take place as well. So it's, but it, it's guaranteed to not be built upon. It could have some recreation activity in it, but no houses.
Other questions? If not, does anyone have a motion on this case?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number fourteen REZ-08 to Town Council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
A motion from Mr. Warner, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Rogers, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is a tough case for the reason that the traffic issues in that area have always been difficult, but at the same time, I feel that some of the mitigation that is being offered by the applicant and what's being offered in another case, I don't know if I can say that, but these cases are interlinked based upon their sharing of the mitigation on traffic. I think that the school issues are always going to be there. It seems that Wake County is always a step behind development in building schools, so that's always going to be an issue, and it's something that the City of Cary doesn't have any control over. So for that reasons, I think that it's a reasonable project, I think the density is good, there are no transition issues with surrounding communities, so for those reasons, I move that it should be approved.
Other discussion and comments?
Well, I'll just say that my, my concern about the connectivity originally was very minimal in the sense that I thought this was a footnote primarily for the Town Council and not for our consideration at all. And then the more that I just sort of read the case over, the more I thought about the fact that we've had some recent issues where people have talked about the, the town's connectivity plans and the fact that certain roads that are supposed to end up becoming another segment of a road end up looking like a cul-de-sac, and people that moved there say they swear they never knew that the road was going to be extended. So it seemed to me that I just wanted to air this out, and I think I've gotten a satisfactory answer to where this doesn't bother me that much, and I think it will be up to the Town Council to decide when they want to spend the money and how they want to do it. Other than that, I agree with Mr. Warner, this is, most of the issues that I think we should be concerned about have pretty much been addressed, so I will vote for this.
I'd like to just comment on the general, because it has been brought up by, by the applicant. The, the general way that we're going in this, this development and the other developments. Now, I frequently use a cliche about a death-by-a-thousand cuts. I will not use that at this time, because this isn't a cut, this is more like a stab wound to the heart. This project itself, looking at it purely as, as this one project, is bad enough as far as its effect on traffic and effect on school crowding. The traffic analysis report did show some mitigation, however, I noticed there was not mitigation at one of the interchanges that was mentioned in the traffic report. The applicant had decided, and it was part of the, the applicants for the various projects had a letter that was, they all signed, basically saying that on Morrisville Parkway, they would not do some of the mitigation that was pointed out, even would not do some of the mitigation that was pointed out, even though Morrisville Parkway is projected to be failing on, and basically that's with just one project. Altogether, with the various projects in the pipeline and yet to be developed, but probably would be developed, on Indian Wells and Okina Road, and then adding on the properties in this area to the south, the Stitt, South and North Projects, we're looking at an additional 118 acres of property in the pipeline, maybe some that I've missed. The development, that would result in from somewhere between 356 to 949 additional houses, with it being between three and eight dwelling units per acre. So, looking at all of this, and the traffic that will result from that, I think this project and the other projects together would have an enormous bad effect on the crowding, both in the schools and the roads in this area. And I know that some of the approval criteria which we are given includes a requirement that the town be able to provide sufficient public safety, educational schools, recreational and transportation, which in this case would mean roads, services to the area. That is part of our charge, part of the council's charge in deciding on a rezoning case. Looking at this from the perspective of the entire pipeline and probable other properties that would be brought online and developed as a result of this, we're not providing that capacity. As far as the schools, I realize they're controlled by other people, not by the Town of Cary. However, there's nothing we can do about that right now. It's not our control, it's other people's control. Perhaps that will change in the future. But even if it does change, it does take time to build schools. It takes a lot longer to build and occupy schools than houses, particularly if you need to have a bond issue and have an election on the bond issue. So, I think we're making a bad situation with our schools, which are already crowded, we already have some capped. The schools in this area are listed as being overcapacity, and we're making it worse with additional students. The traffic, looking at the intersections on 55, are already bad. They're projected, without these developments, to be failing. And we're adding on top of that additional cars. And that goes down, that's not just the ones in the immediate area, but even the High House Road, NC-55 intersection, which is affected by this. So, for that reason, I oppose this development and this rezoning.
Other comments? Mr. Grassley?
Just a comment on what was a statement by one of our staff members in relation to 55. It was, I'm paraphrasing, but as 55 becomes more congested, you'll see people willing to pay the fine and go to the turn, or pay the fee and go to the turnpike. Well, not to be flip about it, but in a nutshell, that means our traffic strategy is to make things so bad, we send people someplace else. I will vote for this, but I bring this up because we've talked about this recently. And some of these little nodes that don't get connected, they're not sexy, they're not parks, they're not theaters, they're not things that Cary does super well, but they're essential services. They're core mission-critical utilities, just like roads and sewers and streetlights and police and fire. And I bring this up because, you know, council has us here to give advice. I will vote for this, but again, it's not always sexy, but it needs to be done. Traffic is the white elephant for Cary over the next 20 years, and these little nodes are getting to be a problem. And it's time to, in the budget cycle, put it in the CIP and start funding these. That's it.
Mr. Vangelista?
I looked at this thing for quite a while before I got here, and it started to bug me then, but listening to Mr. Shaw now, it's starting to bug me more. But we look at this thing somewhat holistically, and we see something we're not too excited about with regard to traffic. But then, when we look at each and every individual case, what runs in my head is, how can I penalize this one project for what I see as becoming a larger issue? But sooner or later, the straw's going to break the camel's back, and some rezoning project is going to be the first one where this board or Town Council says enough. And I just don't, I would feel terrible for that one applicant at that time. But as I look at this thing, I mean, the gaps in this road, and I agree with you that these are things that are incumbent upon governance to resolve, but this smacks to me of socialize the risk and privatize the return. These are the expensive parts of the road that have to be done. Now, I understand and I empathize completely that from a cost-effective standpoint, no one may want to do that kind of work, but I don't know if it's within the town's purview to reach out and say, you know, we'll expect the developer to assume the cost of making what a regular road would have been, and the town will pick up the difference that comes from having to mitigate a stream buffer or something. But if we, if we just adopt an all-or-nothing, I'm afraid we will be doing these, and we'll be doing all these other nodes somewhere else. And I hope this doesn't happen. I hope it doesn't. But I fear someone a few, 18 months from now will be looking at property, and that sales agent says, don't worry, the town's going to fill that road in. The town's going to take care of that. You'll have that road. And that just makes me uneasy. But at the end of the day, I cannot, sorry for that cliche, I cannot penalize this applicant. I mean, they've done everything within their universe to mitigate this thing, and the next applicant has done the same thing. So, we really can't say, well, you haven't fixed the whole world, so I got to hold it against you. But boy, I'm, I'll probably approve this, but I sure, deep down in my recesses, don't feel real good about it.
Ms. Harris?
I'm going to jump on the same bandwagon. When I looked at the property and I drove it, it's like, traffic is an issue. The overcrowding of schools is an issue. I think that the applicant has worked well in trying to come up with a plan. I appreciate the information from Wake County, even though, like Mr. Rogers said, it's not really part of our job, but it's still, it's a concern. Is the plan perfect? I don't think it is, because I don't like the gaps. I think that's bad. But I don't feel that we should penalize the applicant. So, for that, I will, I will support it.
Mr. Fisher?
I would just concur with the previous statements. I see this plan as certainly having been well thought out, and I see that the applicant has done, I think, about as good a job as feasible, given the constraints that are listed here. Having said that, you know, I agree with the concerns over the transportation issues and the connectivity issues that have been cited here. But again, as previously stated, it's difficult to penalize the applicant because of an issue that really is not of their making. So, with some concern, I will support this.
I guess I'll briefly say, I certainly agree with the concerns that have been expressed. On the one hand, I think this is a reasonable density for the land use, the underlying land use plan. It's not at the top end of what it could be, based on this proposal. I do commend the applicant for the mitigation work for traffic and for the, working with the other applicants that we know are linked to this, even though we're looking at the single case, to try and find something better. And that's the part that actually makes me uncomfortable, is that we have three or four, potentially more over time, of these pieces coming in, and each one adds to the cumulative effect of the concerns that we've expressed. And I know it's not reasonable to expect that all of this land can be assembled by one party and brought forward as one case. But at the same time, given the current states of these, I would much rather see it come forward in a more synchronized, holistic way. If the applicants are already making agreements, it would be nice to see them sort of, you know, bring these things together, even if they are by different parties with slightly different nuances to the rezoning. Because of that, it is difficult to penalize one applicant, but the way I sort of look at this is, I'd rather see all of them come forward together so we can make a better total decision. And so, I weigh it both ways and come down on the side of, I don't think this quite does it for me either. So, if there aren't any other comments, we can call a vote. All those in favor of the motion, which was to recommend approval, say aye.
Aye.
And show of hands, just to be sure. And opposed, no?
No.
It's six to two with Mr. Shaw and myself. And thank you, Ms. Grandin. And it looks like you are up again for 14REZ12, the Phillips property at Indian Wells Road.
This property is on approximately 46.67 acres, located just south of Indian Wells Road and adjacent to NC-55 Highway. Subject parcel is shown here in yellow. An aerial view of the property shows that portion of it is vacant, and then there's a detached residential home on one of the parcels. Land use plan designation for the property is medium-density residential. There's a small portion of the property that shows the office and institutional that was, when envisioned, as part of a proposed development plan, but the land use plan designation overview is for medium-density residential. Existing zoning is residential 40. Proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. The applicant has proposed that there be a limit of three dwelling units per acre, that there be a 40-foot type B buffer along the eastern property line, and that the rear of any attached residential structures adjacent to Indian Wells or NC-55 shall include a minimum of 40% masonry on the building facade. As with the previous case that you just heard, there's a number of traffic mitigations that were identified in the traffic study, and the applicants provided both a list of those voluntary mitigations that they're prepared to address, as well as their justification for why certain mitigations are not addressed. And again, that's going back to that collaborative effort between the applicants to divide up those mitigations. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified of the request. The property was posted and advertised. There is one protest petition, and it does constitute a valid protest. The filer of the protest petition was concerned with how their property would be able to develop in the future unless they were part of this assemblage. The applicant spoke to that at the Town Council public hearing, and what it boiled down to is they were not able to reach an agreement on the acquisition of that property. The site is impacted by a stream buffer according to the GIS maps, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of site plan or subdivision plan review. The blue areas show the proposed street-side trails in close proximity to the subject property. And the portion of the property along Indian Wells is designated as a collector road. Therefore, that would require a 30-foot streetscape along that portion of the road. Small portion of the road has frontage on NC-55, which is a thoroughfare, so a 50-foot streetscape would be required there. And as I mentioned, the applicant has also offered a zoning condition, that there be a buffer, a 40-foot wide buffer along that eastern property line. And the closest transit route is the NC-55 Highway Triangle Transit Route. This concludes Steph's presentation, and following the applicant's comments, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grandin, and we'll invite the applicant to give their perspective.
Thank you, Debra. Mr. Miller and members of the Planning and Zoning Board, Jason Barron, here on behalf of the applicant. Want to talk about four things related to this particular zoning request. The plan, traffic impacts, which are going to sound familiar, school impacts, which are probably going to sound familiar, and then finally, the protest petition that's been filed on this case. The plan, as Debra indicated, is consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan calls for medium-density residential on this site, and we are at the extreme low end of that by capping our proposed density at three dwelling units per acre. I'm not the only person who has sat in on the multitude of Town Council meetings where the conversation has been about complying with the spirit of the land use plan. And one of the themes that has evolved during the Town Council's deliberations, especially related to medium-density residential planned projects, is making sure it's the right fit in the right location. And we think a maximum residential density of three dwelling units per acre hits the nail on the head when it comes to achieving the spirit of the land use plan. From a traffic standpoint, I do want to give a little bit of credit to the town's planning staff, and I do appreciate the fact that there is traffic out on 55. There's a lot of traffic out on 55, and that is going to, there's going to continue to be more traffic on the entire roadway network in that area. It's a very fast-growing part of the town, as we all know. But the credit to the staff really goes to, in my opinion, they're trying to take a holistic approach, and we were willing participants as part of that process. Now, not holistic in the sense of addressing every single issue that is out there, but the staff took it upon themselves to essentially call in my clients, the clients in the previous case, as well as one other case that you all heard the land use plan amendment request for today, and the conditions, as you all have seen, you know, the conditions related to zoning have been crafted specifically around that meeting. So, I do want to give a lot of credit to the town's transportation engineering staff. I don't think they're sitting there just saying, oh, shucks, you know, the world is going to heck in a handbasket, and we can't sit here and do anything about it. I actually think they're doing what they have the ability to control, and I think that was the word that we used in the prior case. And I would agree that what they have the ability to influence, I think that they are taking the right approach. And, you know, as it relates to what we're doing as part of our case, and again, I heard the conversation you all had on the last case, and that is, you know, what is, what's the overall issue, and what can we expect applicants to do? We think the conditions related to traffic associated with our site, which again is a pretty low-density residential development, we think those conditions are reasonable and in the public interest. With respect to schools, and I don't want to spend a whole lot of time going through it, because we don't control the ability of the school board and the Board of Commissioners to get along, and who knows what the Board of Commissioners is going to look like come January 1st of this year. If you all have been following that process, schools and education is a big topic of conversation in those four races. I will say, I want to touch on, there are three elementary schools that are funded and under, or either under construction or planned for construction as part of this bond. E-37, which is on White Oak Church Road, is planned to open in August of 2016. That is a elementary school in this general vicinity that's planned for 780 elementary school kids. E-38, which is at Pleasant Grove Church Road, which is, it's not along the 55 corridor, but recognizing the public school system is the Wake County Public School System. It's not the Northwest Cary Public School System, and every school that is added aids in the process of alleviating the existing burden. E-38, which is what Wake County Public Schools refers to it as, that's on Pleasant Grove Church Road. It is planned for a 780-student elementary school with a core to support 900. And then finally, Scotch Ridge Elementary in Apex. That's on Apex Barbecue. Again, not in Northwest Cary, but it's another 780-student elementary school that is planned for this general area. So, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that there is going to be sufficient school capacity when they go to develop these properties. I don't think any of us have the ability to predict that. But however, there are schools that are in the works. There are elementary schools in this area that I think, viewed in the overall, how does the Wake County Public School System work, will assist in alleviating the burden that Northwest Cary is being faced with right now. So, that's my conversation on schools. Finally, the protest petition. And it is that triangular-shaped parcel between our site and Highway 55. It is zoned R-40. We have reached out to the owners. We have reached out to the owners, and quite frankly, what my clients who want to do residential, residential development on their site, and what the expectations are of that property owner from a getting a deal done standpoint, they're incredibly divergent right now. I talked to David Lasley. David Lasley contacted me today. He's a landscape architect who does work in Raleigh. He's been retained by the owners, I guess he's been retained by Glenn Futral and the other heirs who own this piece of property. And I told him we were happy, we would be happy to talk about things related to potential impacts on his site. You know, we've already offered a 40-foot buffer between the two uses to make sure that when the houses go in, in the event that that property is developed, it's not developed in a way that's going to impede the folks who are buying on our site, we're certainly more than happy to continue to have conversations about that. But as you all know, this case has been going on for quite some time, and we really haven't made a whole lot of headway in addressing what the issues are, because I think primarily it's a matter of, you know, an adjacent property owner wanting to be opportunistic, just given the fact that there is a zoning going on. Quite frankly, there's leverage associated with a protest petition. So with that, you know, again, I think that for a lot of the reasons that you guys talked about related to the last case, as well as the conditions associated with this case, I think this is a case that makes a lot of sense. Again, we are on the extraordinarily low side of medium density residential, and we respectfully request you all's support, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open up for board questions for the applicant or staff.
Yes, for the applicant. Mr. Barron, I wouldn't mind stepping back up. Can you tell us how many dwelling units will be within this development?
How many total dwelling units?
Right.
Well, it's roughly 47 acres at three units to the acre, so it's going to be something less than 150. Doing the math, it's nine, something less than 141.
And it's going to be a combination of townhouses and detached?
That's exactly right.
And the total adding up to 140 or below?
In that ballpark, yep.
Okay.
I feel like there's another question coming.
Yeah, only one for you.
And that was the end of yours?
Yep.
Other questions? I do have one. The previous case we looked at that showed the road with all the discussion with the gaps, I think did not cross or incorporate this site. Is that correct?
It did not, that's correct.
Just wanted to refresh my memory there. Other questions from the board? If not, then a motion would be in order if someone would like to make one.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number 14 REZ 12 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion for Mr. Warner. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second from Ms. Harris, best discussion?
Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons that I proposed, the last case that we heard would apply here as well. It's a low-density development. There's been, I think, a very honest effort to mitigate some of the issues, i.e. traffic. I'm glad to hear the research that was done about the schools that are in the pipeline that will help with the overcrowding in this area. But I think that it's a good fit, and I don't think that we can penalize this applicant, you know, for perceived issues that may be four or five years down the road.
Other discussion?
Ditto what John said, except that I appreciate the applicant reaching out to the adjacent property owner and at least offering some of the buffer, et cetera. So I'll support it.
Just to comment, the few comments. First of all, everything I said, the previous case really applies to this, to all of them in this area, except that this one is slightly worse than the previous. More dwelling units, more traffic than what we saw before, a little bit more. But again, it's cumulative impact. Actually, it's the impact of any one of these is bad enough. The cumulative impact is extremely bad. I will note, as far as schools, same comments did apply, but I was interested in reading from the, both the minutes of the planning board discussion, the council discussion, and the staff report from the comprehensive plan amendment back in 2007, CPA 04. A statement that it is best to handle that such details, this is referring to schools, are more appropriately handled with a rezoning case. And it explains that, and that in contrast with the zoning case, it is possible to develop better estimates. Basically, they were saying that we shouldn't really look at the schools back during the comprehensive plan amendment, but the rezoning would be the appropriate time. This is the rezoning. And again, it's not a matter that I want to penalize one particular applicant, because I don't. Everything applies to all the applicants. As far as traffic, I noticed one thing, that the Morrisville Parkway intersection is expected to be failing, to have an F level of service. That is, even if they incorporate some of the mitigations which were proposed in the TAR, however, the applicants for all, for three properties in this area have stated that they will not add some of the mitigation that is proposed in the TAR. As far as the idea of making of NC 55 getting worse, so people will pay the additional fee to drive, and also for many people have to go out of the way, plus pay an additional fee to drive on the turnpike, maybe that will happen. But I don't want to be part of making a road in Cary so bad that people will go out of the way and pay a higher fee in order to avoid it. I don't think that's the way we want to go in the Terry, and I don't think that is acceptable. So again, I'm going to oppose this.
Other comments, discussion? Mr. Gascoigne?
I'll support this. Very much of my sentiments from the previous case apply to this one. I think in the previous case, I made a comment about traffic is just going to get worse over the next 20 years, while in five minutes, it got worse. So I'll support this, and it was also brought up, the cumulative effect. So how do you, how do we as a body approve one rezoning, and then the next person who comes in line, and just by the luck of the draw on the agenda, this is right down the street? I mean, how can I professionally or ethically vote against this? So it's, the genie is out of the bottle, and these properties are going to get rezoned, development is going to happen, and the focus needs to be on transportation, but I will support it.
Other comments?
I'll hop in here. I think it's unfair to feel that Cary is making 55 a bad road, so people will hop on the freeway and pay a toll. Just don't agree with that, I'm sorry. Are things getting more congested? Yes. But the problem that I think we all have is that what we're talking about is adequate public facilities. Sewer, roads, schools, whatever. Typically, schools are paid for by property taxes in most jurisdictions. And adequate public facility fees are allowed in probably 30 or so states across the United States. However, we're in North Carolina, and guess what, folks? Doesn't work here. I think it was a little unfair to Western Wake that we have a toll road out there, that section of 540, and the rest of the triangle doesn't pay a toll. Why is that? Well, that's not our problem, but it is our problem, because we've got to live with it. So to me, you can talk and tell you're blue in the face about getting our school system to catch up with the growth around here, but John and I were sharing before the meeting, a factoid that I just saw that came across my email that said that Raleigh is the fastest growing city in the U.S. in terms of the number of children aged 5 to 14 from 2000 to 2013. We had a 55.7% increase in the number of those kids. That's pretty extraordinary, and our school system is trying its best with the kind of funding that it gets, and we all know what happened to this last bond issue, and the fact that probably between the county commissioners and the school board, the number of potential schools that could have been in that bond issue was reduced for maybe some political reasons. Anyway, I think it's frustrating. I understand where John's coming from, but I don't think that we can penalize individual properties for some inadequacies that are truly beyond our control. And I think people have the right to develop their land, and I think Cary is growing, and it's growing in a rather purposeful way. And I'm just sorry that we're characterizing our town as trying to make a road bad so that people will hop on a freeway and pay a toll. I don't think that's the way Cary works.
Other comments, discussion from the board? Mr. Barron?
One caution to us, and we've asked earlier this evening, it would be nice to see a holistic approach to, if several properties in one area are looking to put a case together, maybe they should get together and work out some mitigation plans and bring us one giant thing. But yet, several times, we have said, well, I'm not going to penalize one small applicant. Well, we've got to make sure if someone or someones come together with a very large one, we don't go, wow, look at all the traffic that's going to cause, and deny it, because we're therefore putting a chilling effect on what it is that we really want, which is a holistic approach. So what we saw here tonight was a bunch of smaller cases that said, together, we may not be able to mitigate everything, but we're going to mitigate more than we could have done each individually. And I don't want us to lose sight of that as we look at these things piece by piece. You know, just because a group comes together as a whole, and they don't solve every one of our concerns, but they've solved more than they would have on their own, we ought to acknowledge that in the positive. So I thought I'd just throw that out there.
Mr. Warner?
I'll just throw out one thing, that I think one of the issues that we have to deal with here is that the land use plan that we're working with today was created some number of years ago, and that is the document, that is the legal document that we have to go by today. But there is a process ongoing, started by the city council with the Imagine Cary project, to look at all of this and make corrections to the land use plan. If we see that we're overbuilding in one area, there can be adjustments made to that, and so I think that this process will correct some of these problems that we're dealing with and that we're talking about today. But until that process is completed, and the council and this board has adopted, you know, the new plan, we're going to have to deal with these. And I don't think we should penalize applicants who make an honest effort to make an economic or make, you know, profit on their property. But having said that, I still think that this is a good plan and should deserve the approval of the board.
I would like to make a response to a couple of things. First, since it was just brought up, the comprehensive plan, the last time there was really a true holistic look at this whole area, I don't know how long ago it was, but when the Northwest Plan and Southwest Plan were adopted, this area was set as very low-density residential, VLDR. That was changed in 2007 with the comprehensive plan amendment that was put forth by the people who owned this property that we're now talking about, to increase that from VLDR to MDR. But the last time anyone really looked at the entire area and decided where we want to put development, where we want to hold off development, that was VLDR, which is the current use of it. And it was only until the owners decided they wanted to change it, when they were anticipating a sale, I believe, did it change to what it is now, to MDR. As far as NC 55, I don't want to accuse anyone of planning deliberately to make that so bad that people will use the thruway and pay an extra toll. I'm just saying, that is what we're doing, even though we don't maybe intend to, but we're doing that.
Other, Ms. Harris?
A follow-up on that, on the 540-55. It's still your choice as to what road you're going on, and if you're, you know, like Mr. Rogers said, the Raleigh-Cary area is growing, and if you go to any major city across the United States, you're going to have a toll road. And so we're just ahead of the ballgame a little bit, and I think that it boils down to, it's your choice if you want to sit in traffic on 55, or you want to hop on 540. We have the option, and I love 540, so I think it's, I'd rather be on there than 55, but, so.
I think everybody waited but me. I'll briefly say, as others said, the same concerns, the same issues brought up for the previous case, I would say, apply here. So rather than repeating them, I think there are stresses as a result of this. And as I said, this was a very tight balance for me in this case. I see it slightly differently in that two things make a difference for me. The first is, it's not part of that interleaved contiguous set of properties that I'd like to see come together. You can certainly accuse me of being inconsistent, but I believe the separation of Wackena Road and the fact that that road, the connector road with Gap's does not cross this site, I can, in my mind, see this one a little better as a separate parcel. And second, and most important for me, is this has the lowest density that the underlying land use plan calls for, and at three units per acre, and it's an extremely low density, and therefore, it's probably the best we're going to get, and it does match the underlying land use plan, which granted, did change, but it is what it is today. So if there isn't any other discussion, call for a vote on the motion to recommend approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I thought you were just not telling me, so that passes seven to one, and then we will move to our final case, 14 REZ 20 Habitat for Humanity. Ms. Granon, you have the floor again.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 0.53 acres located on the west side of Evans Road. Shows you the proximity of the parcel north of Rochelle Drive. The land use plan designation is low-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 12, and the applicant has proposed a zoning designation of transitional residential conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the density to a maximum of two lots, limit the use to detached residential, set a minimum lot size of 11,000 square feet, a minimum setback of 10 feet on each side, and 25 feet in the rear. They've offered a condition that would create a shared driveway requirement for the two parcels to Evans Road, and they've offered a 20-foot type B landscape area along the northern property line. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers, according to our GIS maps, but that would be field determined. Cary Parks Recreation and Greenways did not. Cary Parks Recreation and Greenways did not identify any greenway trails or issues in the vicinity of the property. This shows the location of the property with frontage along Evans Road, which is a thoroughfare. There's no transit currently in the general vicinity of the subject property. And this shows the notification within 800 feet of the subject property. There were several protest petitions submitted, but none of them were within the 100-foot boundary around the property, and therefore, there is not a valid protest petition. Still, we did summarize some of the concerns from the citizens and feedback from the council meeting. They, the protest petitions related to whether or not future development on these two lots would be compatible with the existing neighborhood. There were no speakers, other than the applicant at the public hearing. And one of the council members had a question as to the need for the shared driveway. And staff explained that that was to minimize the number of curb cuts on Evans Road. Even though you may still have the same number of cars with two houses, they wouldn't both be using it, the driveway, at the same time. This concludes staff's presentation. I would, before I turn this over to the applicant, like to point out the questions that we've received recently about the lot width. The transitional residential conditional use has a minimum lot width, which you'll note in the staff report, is a minimum of 40 feet. The subject property is actually 130 feet wide. So, if it's just two lots, that means there's the potential for two identical lots to be 65 feet in width. Or if one of them is only 40, then that makes the other one that much larger. But the reason why they didn't use the residential 12 zoning is because that has a lot width of 80, and they just didn't have enough land area. The lot size is closer to R 12 and the foot, the setbacks are closer to R 12. But the transitional residential doesn't mean that you're definitely going to have a 40-foot wide lot. Just means that's the smallest it possibly could be. And once the applicant has made his comments, then I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. We'll open it up for applicant comments.
Yes, good evening, and I'll be brief. It's getting late, I know. We're probably all ready to get out of here. My name is Gary Walston, and I work with Bass, Nixon, Kennedy. We're land planners and landscape architects, and we were hired by Habitat for Humanity of Wake County to look at rezoning this property so they could build two houses on the site instead of one. As Deborah mentioned, the, we were literally within about 900 square feet of having enough land area to come in under R 12. So, we're, we're very close to the spirit of the existing R 12 zoning, and we decided to match the R 12 setbacks, front, rear, and sides to keep in character with the R 12 zoning. Even though we're coming in and asking for T R zoning, the lot is significantly larger than a minimum lot requires, requirements for T R zoning. And we are probably about the same size as the lots that are on Fisher Creek Lane above us, and significantly larger than the new T R lots that are on Laurel Garden Way south of us. So, we feel like the size of the lots is in keeping with the community. When we came to the public hearing, the only issue that came up for discussion or that one of the members had was why we were offering a shared drive. That came up in discussion in our neighborhood meeting with the adjacent property owners because of concern with traffic accessing Evans Road and the fact that we're just south and on the inside of the curve, the radius curve on Evans Road. So, we offered that as a zoning condition to limit the access to one point versus two. That's the whole reason that came about was that it was a comment made by the adjacent property owners. And that really is all I have to add to what Deborah said. I will mention that we do have a member from Habitat for Humanity here if you guys have any question for them and how they operate and what they're bringing to the neighborhood or how brought to Cary in the past.
Thank you. We'll open it up for board questions for staff or the applicant. Any questions?
I had a couple, and they were both answered in your presentation, Ms. Grannan. Thank you. They were on the lot width and the shared drive. And I had asked, I'd sent an email with questions, and I guess I had looked at the agenda, and I sent it to Mr. Smith. So, you're welcome to ask him to answer it, because I did ask it of him earlier. But I was curious as to other Habitat for Humanity dwellings in Cary and any experience we've had with them either way.
Mr. Miller, before he answers to that, I just want to point out, there are no zoning conditions that require this to be a Habitat for Humanity development or an affordable housing development. So, just keep that in mind as you're discussing this case.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We've had a successful partnership with Habitat for over 15 years. They have built approximately 50 units in Cary. They're located primarily within the Maynard Loop, although we do have some outside the Maynard Loop. They generally build in small of projects of two to three to five, six units, so they don't have a major impact on the neighborhood. We, they, the homeowners and Habitat representative probably can speak better than I can, but they do provide homeowner training, and the homeowners are very prepared to be homeowners, take good care of their properties. And we really have had no complaints, at least in the 10 years that I've been here, about Habitat properties from neighbors. Tax values are, are comparable to surrounding houses, sometimes higher. At least, the recent projects have been very high quality. You may know, just, there, there are seven units at Falcon Point on East Chatham, they're townhomes. They have made a major impact on Waldo Drive by redeveloping some, burned out triplex in one case and, and some other vacant lots. So, the houses have been very high quality.
Thank you. And I, I bring that up because it, it is listed in the agenda as this, and many of our, many of the comments, I think I've gotten and others have gotten from citizens, brought that up. But I would certainly echo the, the town attorney's advice that, you know, this is not a condition of the rezoning as to who would build it or what would be built, but rather the conditions of the zoning as we look at it. Other questions? Hearing none, a motion would be in order if someone has one.
Yes, I will, I'll move that. I move the board forward case number 14 REZ 20 to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Motion from Mr. Shaw. A second from Mr. Warner, I believe I heard. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think basically this does fit in with the neighborhood. It, it looks to me like a very good proposal. The one question on the shared driveway in another location where I live, in another state, I do not have one, but within my neighborhood, there are a number of shared driveways on one side of a road. And when I first looked at them, I was horrified that, you know, two neighbors would have to get together with, not just without a fence to make good neighbors, but with a shared driveway to argue about. But in the many years I've been around, I've seen that it does not do harm. They don't have fights over them. I don't know what all goes into the discussions, but they seem to be doing well. When one of them wants to sell a house, it sells very well. Does not seem to in any way be a negative. And down here, we don't have to worry about who gets to shovel the snow each morning. So, it's probably even better than, than it is there. So, I don't see any problem at all with the shared driveway. Some people don't like them, some people do, but there are enough people who do, and enough people who maybe have had experience with it, wouldn't care. So, basically, I think this is a very good proposal, and I support it.
Thank you. Other discussion? Mr. Vengeley.
I'd like to say something with regard to the public hearing, and I really appreciate the thoroughness of the notes that came from that, from that public hearing. And I got to say, I was somewhat troubled by some of the questions that may have come out in that, in that hearing as, as laid out in the notes. But the fact that no one came to the town council meeting to speak says volumes about how well the applicant was able to deal with the concerns that were put before them, and I didn't want that to go unnoticed.
Other questions, or excuse me, comments, discussion? I'll just say that in, in doing some research on these kinds of developments, I found many comments that said, we support this sort of housing. I'd rather not have it in my area. This is my neighborhood. I live about a quarter mile away from the site, and we walk our dogs directly across from the site frequently, so it's not far at all. In terms of compatibility, what I observed is that what's being proposed here, I think, is, is compatible with other housing up and down Evans Road. There are several ranch and two-story houses, moderate-sized, well-kept homes of various ages, most, most have been there for a while. And one might have argued that when the subdivisions that surround this went in, including the one that I live in, folks could have argued along Evans Road that those subdivisions were incompatible with the existing housing there. And so, in one way, I see it as a bit unfair to say that this is now inconsistent with, or incompatible with, with the subdivisions that have been built in the meantime. And in fact, I don't even see it as, as that. So, I concur with Mr. Shaw and, and other comments that I think this will be a, an appropriate addition to the neighborhood. And if there aren't any other comments, we'll call a vote on the motion, which was to recommend approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eight to zero, and that concludes our main agenda. But just before we adjourn, I did want to point out that this is the last meeting for four of the board members. Mr. Warner, who's been here for two years and represented us on Imagine Cary, and will continue to represent the citizens, so thank you for that. Mr. Gascoigne, who's been here for three or four, four years, I guess. And Mr. Shaw and myself have been here for six years and will all be recognized formally by the town at another meeting that's coming up later this month for all the boards and commissioners, where they will recognize outgoing members. But I just did want to point that out while they had the opportunity. And with that said, I think a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So, move.
A motion from Mr. Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
And before we all leave, is there discussion on the motion? Perhaps there is.
Yes. I promised at my last meeting, I was going to delay the meeting as long as possible. So, no, I would just like to say, I've been here for four years. It has been an honor and a pleasure to, to sit on this board, to work with a fantastic staff that has given us incredible documents to work from and been nothing but professional to, to help the residents of the town of Cary. And I'm from the ETJ, so to help those, we have a lot of cases from the ETJ. My life has just changed, and I find that in the last year, tearing myself away, my wife and I are new parents, and every time I come to this meeting, it gets harder and harder. And my boy is one years old, and I noticed in the last year, I started missing a lot of meetings. It's like, what has changed in my life in the last year? Wow, that's it. So, when the opportunity came for me to step aside, I took it. I will miss the board, I'll miss working with everybody. But at your next meeting, I will watch it on television with my boy sitting in my lap, and I will not miss it. So, thank you for the opportunity. It's been a great experience, but time for me to step aside.
Thank you, Mr. Gascoigne.
Can there be a rebuttal?
If we could make it brief for us.
Yes, I just, I want to say I agree with, with everything. I've been here for five years, and it's been a pleasure to work with everyone, and I've really enjoyed getting to know both the current board members, the previous board members who've already gone off, as well as our staff. And I really appreciate the work that has been done by the staff in providing us with information. I think that has been very helpful. And again, it's been very good to know everybody. So, thank you very much.
And I'll just, if I can, say what they said, except for the one-year-old part, don't have that. And I had told people I would vote against the motion to adjourn at my last meeting, but I won't. So, there's no other discussion, the motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes eight to zero, and we are adjourned. Thank you.